This is a meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it had to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time for public comment during the meeting. I'll put it in Agenda Item 14. One thing that we did at the last meeting is we tabled two items on two different music instruments. And as I recall, when you table an item, it needs to be brought up at the very next meeting. So I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to include a discussion of those two items. Support? Okay, we will add those in.
Should we do a voice vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely, a voice vote.
If you know. Do you have it or it's supposed to fit onto the agenda too or not?
We will put it at the, as Item 4. Right after, after the technology purchase, between 11:00 and 12:00. So it'll be the last item there. Okay. So all in favor of amending the agenda to include the music items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We will have that in at the end. All right, right now, we have a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 budget. Julie.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody.
So I have a pre-presentation, but each of you have a packet of information, a lot that you've seen before. Behind me do our budget amendments. We just pull a lot of historical information together, so you have it as well. But we'll go through this slide this morning. We're mainly going to be focusing on the 2023-2024 budget. That's what our agreement is. But we are also presenting to you today an amendment to our current fiscal year. It's probably pretty standard. We've got, now, how many years since we've had here? As we get closer to the end of the year, we have a better idea of our revenues and our expenditure. I'd like to start with our legal requirements. So we're going to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing right now. Our Chief Administrative Officer, which is our superintendent, is required to submit the budget to the Board of Education. And then the last two are related to the adapting of the budget by the board. So you're not allowed to adapt a budget that's in deficit. So your expenditures can't be greater than your revenues. And your revenues would include fund downs. So it's not just been new revenues that you're expecting for here. It also includes your fund downs. Okay, so budget assumptions. Now, budget is really an estimate of where you think you're going to be in revenues and expenditures. So as you're aware, the state has not approved a budget for next fiscal year. So we're just using a set of assumptions as we build our budget, because you are required to adapt the budget prior to shooting the period. So you can see the assumptions. There's some things we've really talked about a couple of times. I think we've talked about those at the main client community and the particular community. But we're using the executive proposal as our basis for our revenues coming in. So she had in her budget a $458 for people increased by the foundational. So we put that in here, it's about $4.2 million. We're also projecting a student loss of 85 students. But projecting a slight increase to one of the categoricals related to the retirement program that the district is required to participate in. In this case, it's called Section 147A. That's simply a revenue stream for this district to kind of help offset the cost of retirement. We're not sure what that number will land yet. So I'm just being pretty conservative and estimating a $400,000 revenue increase for that particular categorical. We're also decreasing a new categorical that we actually have for this year, and it's a part of our current budget amendment that we're presenting. There was a one-time new categorical, 147C2, also related to the retirement program. This one is like the 147C1. It's really confusing, but that we have had for a number of years. That is the one that's really an in and out in our system. So the state sets aside money off the top of the budget. And because of some accounting rules, they actually have to send the money to the school districts, invoice us, and we have to pay those funds back. So there was a one-time additional increase in payment to the retirement system. So that's the 147C2. So we're backing that cap out for next school year. We're putting it in for this amendment, and then we're backing it out for next school year. We also know that our SO2 money is ending in September of 2023. So we're backing out that budget for next fiscal year. We have a slight increase of our SO3 as we have been budgeting for different programs. So that's about a $400,000 add to the budget. And then we have a lot of other grants, our local, state, and some other federal funding that just are decreasing and somewhat be a slight uptick. So that is really about $400,000. The SO2, SO3, and the other grants are all neutral. So you're going to see these as increases and decreases on the revenue side, and you'll see the same thing on the expenditure side. They don't, do not have an impact here to the bottom line. We're projecting just a slight decrease in interest income. Who knows what that will be? But Dan likes to say I'm conservative by nature. So we're going to pull that down a little bit. And then special ed heavily. So that's a part of our funding for our special education program for our students with disabilities. So the governor's proposal has a slight increase in that. So we're applying that $300,000. The next one, special ed labs funds. So that's related to our itinerant staff and that support our students with disabilities. So if you think psychologists and social workers and discipline therapists and physicians, et cetera. They're really unique in how they're funded. And each year, the state, when the year closes out, and all the school districts submit their expenditure reports, special ed, there's typically some money left that's not on spec at the state level. And so county is eligible for up to $2 million for that, if there's anything left over. Usually takes about May. So the state fiscal year closes at the end of the calendar, and usually it's about May when we know how much of those leftover funds that we're going to receive. So our current budget amendment that we're proposing for this fiscal year is $190,000. And then we'll pull that back out for next year. We don't know. It's not a concept. We really don't know of that. That was a little confusing, so. We're decreasing our Medicaid slightly again. And in terms of just being conservative, we're pulling that back down a little bit. And this next one is new. It's a part of our amendment for this current fiscal year. And so I'm pulling that back out for next year. So there's a new accounting pronouncement that we have to implement this year. And it's related to subscriptions. So think of IXL. We approved IXL, the board approved IXL, and that was a multi-year subscription. This new accounting pronouncement requires us to account for that a little bit differently. So typically, what we would have done is we would have recorded that expense and then asked for reimbursement for it. And that's all that you would see. We've got a revenue and expense. We actually have to record an additional revenue and additional expense for that. And then each year, we have to capitalize, what we call capitalizing accounting, that. It's really confusing. But I need to pull that out, because that was a one-time for our current fiscal year. You will not have that for next fiscal year. So the year of the purchase of this subscription. So it's hard to explain it. And it's just one of those accounting rules that they throw at us and treat us like a business. You know, if you think about a private entity, and it's just a little quirky for school districts. We've talked before about this, but next one, the one-time insurance reimbursement. So that was the closeout of an insurance program that we participated in. So we will not have that next year. So we're pulling that revenue down. And then just a decrease of miscellaneous line items. You know, we have over 15,000 line items that are our accounting system. So all of those changing as a reduction of $540,000.
Julie, if I could, I'd just point out a couple of things there. So the largest item there is that decrease, Section 147C2. MIPSR stands for Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System that the state administers. We are mandated to be part of that system. What the state has done is employers and employees pay in. Think of Social Security. We pay into the retirement system to fund employees when they retire from this defined benefit program system. But the actual costs, when they run all the actuarial statistics, are actually, they estimate that the retirement fund is underfunded. So there's an ongoing long-term liability. Now, that liability is on paper, because not everyone is drawing from the retirement system. There's a lot of people who are actively working. Someday, they will draw from the retirement system, but they're not at this point in time. So it's sort of a liability on paper. But still, from an accounting standpoint, the state wants to close that liability. So what they have done is they have increased the cost rate for employers, think school districts, to help bring down that liability. But the state as well is paying extra on top. Think of your mortgage payment. And sometimes people elect to make an extra payment on their mortgage payment on top of that. That's what the state is doing. They're paying additional funds to bring down that long-term liability. However, the governmental accounting folks, and what GASPIS stands for is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they say you cannot transfer that money from the Michigan Department of Treasury to the Michigan retirement system. You can't transfer that way. You have to transfer it through the school districts. So as Julie said, the money comes to us, and then we send it to the retirement system. So we are simply a pass-through vessel for that extra payment. And that's what Section 147 is about, the retirement system. Now, 147A, just above that, that's a weird little thing. They're essentially giving us a bed back from beyond coupon to reduce our payment on the employer's side. That's what Section 147A is. 147C2 is the state's additional payment. They just cannot transfer the funds directly to the retirement system. It has to go through the entity where the payroll comes for all of these employees. If that makes any sense. So that's why you'll see that exact thing on the expense side as well. It's an in and an out. It really doesn't have any impact to our bottom line budget on that.
Yes, that was exactly the question I was going to answer. So thank you.
So we're not holding any of the retirement fund money at all then?
No, we do not.
So we're not. So they, they hold it?
They do. The state of Michigan does. And it's a great question, Hallie, because what the state of Michigan does is they have folks in the Michigan Department of Treasury that invest these funds in the retirement system. And there's four retirement systems they're watching over. The school employees' retirement system, the state employees' retirement system, the retirement system for Michigan court and judicial officers, and then the retirement system for the Michigan State Police. Those are the four retirement systems that they have. Now, they're separated out into different accounts at the state level. But they take that money and they invest it. They invest it in the stock market. And you may have heard of news reports of big state pension programs, you know, moving money around in various different investments here and there. And they have an estimated rate of return. Any year that they don't meet the rate of return, the fund becomes partially underfunded. Then there are other years where they actually exceed the rate of return, and they can sort of make up for a prior year's loss. So usually, we'll get it over a five-year period on that. The other thing that they're estimating is what's the growth in payroll in school districts? Because the more payroll, the higher the payroll. Retirement is a percentage of someone's wage. So the employer is paying in, and the employee is paying in a percentage of their wage. So if those wages go up, more money is going into the retirement system on that. Then the third thing they look at is the people drawing from the retirement system, retirees. And they look at that ratio of people paying in and people drawing out. Again, it's similar to Social Security, that category. But we don't hold any of those funds. We don't manage any of that. We are simply told, here's what you need to pay. And that's what we do on that. Our payroll folks know quite a bit about that, says Julie.
Right, so, and I'm just saying, so you're saying you're increasing the cost of something to lower the liability? So the state's carrying the liability then, not us?
Right.
Correct. Yep, the retirement program.
Because if they play the stock market and the stock market crashes, then they, it's down.
Right.
Correct. All right, so those were our revenue assumptions for next year. Now let's talk about our budget assumption, or expense assumption. So we've talked before, as we've talked about retirement. So we know that rate is going up for next year. That was released with the executive budget proposal. So that's a little over 3%. So that's roughly $1.6 million. Our medical insurance rate is going up. So we have a cactus of what we can pay. We know that's going up 4%. And then those next four are exactly what we just talked about on the revenue side. So you'll see, here's the counterpart on the expenditure side related to 147C2, SO2, SO3, and then just our other grants. And then over on the right-hand side, we're pulling down operations and maintenance by a little bit. We bumped that budget up for our current amendment. We have been doing a really good job of trying to shore some things up in the system that we've needed to shore up for a while. So we're going to pull that budget back down. Our transportation software. So you have approved that as a board, and so we will not have that expenditure next year. We made those payments through that vendor. A slight decrease in technology, because they had a slight uptick for our current year as well. Athletics. That production is really, most of it is related to some one-time donations from our booster groups. So I believe that the crew boosters helped pay for a new boat for one of the schools, if I'm remembering correctly. So we're pulling that back down, because that was a one-time. And then, just like the revenue side, there are a lot of budget lines. So there's just a variety of budget lines that are adjusting down about $196,000.
Good question. On your ESER, is this the last, the increase, is this our last 400? Let's say 403. Is this our last ESER for this year? Or is there another payment coming out and another decrease and increase coming out? Because another's ending and another one's beginning.
Yeah, because this is the last question. Is this the last year for the SO2 funding? The SO3 will go through September of 2024. So when we close the books out this year and look at where we're at with SO3 and what do we have left? And what was our award amount, $8.5 million? And what have we spent for the last couple fiscal years? Then we will, as a part of a budget amendment, try to budget the balance of that for, in 2023-24. And it probably will be a tiny bit in '24-25 related to summer programming, because we will use those funds, we're required to use a portion of that for summer programming. So you'll see a little bit with our fiscal year '25 year as well. It won't be significant dollars, but definitely something.
Now, what you're seeing here are the changes that we're looking at based on the current year we're looking at. So you take medical insurance. We don't spend $400,000 for medical insurance. We spend about $12 million for medical insurance. But that cost is going up about 3%. So that's a $400,000 change from what we currently have. So what we're showing here are not the total dollar amounts in these categories, but what's different from the current year that we estimate would be a change for next year. That's substantial. And that's why you see that miscellaneous lineup. And what we're doing is we're netting up all the other changes we estimate and all the other line items. And as Julie said, there's at least 15,000 different budget line items. The state has an accounting manual that we have to follow. So every building has its own account for, you know, the teachers' own account for folks who are providing some sort of pupil support. And you multiply that by 18 different schools, and you get that, that spreads all the way through on that. So what we're representing here are changes in expenditures and revenues from what we're currently.
Okay, so here is what is not in the proposed budget that we're presenting to today. There are no increases to employee wages, because we are still negotiating those contracts with all of our employee groups. So there's nothing built in. So what we would do is in a budget amendment, sometime next year, we would bring forward to you an adjusted budget for, that would reflect those increases in employees, whatever that turns out to be. And you, as a board, will be, you know, when we come up with a tender agreement and the employees, right by their side, then we would bring that proposed contract summons to you for approval. So you'll know, how to kind of at least, you know, if it's 2%, or 1%, or whatever that is, you'll know that information. Also not in this budget is any change to staffing levels. So we've simply rolled staffing levels from our current year to next year. But we know there are some changes. We know that there'll be some position reductions. There might be some position adds. And sometimes those things go throughout the summer as enrollment is changing throughout the summer, right? If we get a handful of students that come in for a particular grade level of the school that's tipping us over, that we might need to add a sub check for second grade at Thornpool, for example. So that work happens all throughout the summer. So we have not built in anything, any reductions or adds for this. Nor have we put in any savings from retirees. If we're replacing a position for, let's say, a math teacher at one of high schools is retiring, we know we need to replace that position. Which typically is savings, right? The person is on the higher end of the pay scale, and the person we're bringing in is a little bit lower. So that's not a thing in this budget. So those items will be captured in a budget amendment for next year.
I would just also point out, on page six of your packet that Julie provided, you'll see all those major changes that she listed are spelled out there for you. So you can see all those right there. Page six.
All right. So what's this mean in terms of the numbers, right? You've seen the adjustments. So the first column is our current budget that we have for our current fiscal year. So we're anticipating bringing in about $24.58 million. Our proposed amendment would adjust that to $135.5. The bulk of that is that new $6.5 million of the 147C2. That's the largest increase in that for this current year. And then, of course, our proposed budget for next year, that's that right back up. So we're anticipating about $129.3 million in our general fund in total for next year. On the expenditure side, and you can see the different category, high-level categories here, but our current budget is about $128.8 million of expense. Our proposed amendment is $137.5. Again, $6.5 million of that is that 147C2. And then we'll pull that back down in '23-24, because we won't have that 147C2 fund. So we're projecting about $129.9 million of expense for next fiscal year.
I would just point out, on that piece that Julie's talking about, that 147C2. So one of our state representatives that's representing Forest Hills, Thomas Albert. Thomas Albert used to work for the Michigan Department of Treasury and was one of the 11 investment managers for all those pension dollars. So he knows that pension piece really well, because he used to have the job of trying to manage all those assets. He has been very passionate and firm about paying down the unfunded liability there. So one of the things we talked about this past winter, if you think back, and even fall, that the state had more revenue. And so one of the things that the state did is they amended their budget in the middle of the year and did a budget supplemental. And one of the things he wanted to do, and others agreed with him, was to make an additional payment to pay down this long-term liability in the pension system. As they pay down that long-term liability, it helps the state's credit rating. It brings greater financial health to what is probably the state's largest liability that they have on the books, which is the pension program. So they were saying, hey, we've got this additional money. Let's pay down some debt, if you will, on that. So they put that payment in. But again, the state can't transfer the money from the Michigan Department of Treasury over to the Michigan Public Schools or state employees' retirement system. They have to send it through the actual employer. So that's why we didn't have that in the budget earlier, because that wasn't in the state's original budget that they adopted last summer. Makes sense?
I just want to clarify. So the $129.9 that we're looking at, that's including our seven contract negotiation, like approximately?
No.
No.
The current. If there is no change and if there's not an increase built into the $129.9 for employee wages. Because we have settled those contracts, so we didn't, we didn't estimate, say, it would be 1%, then fuck, goes up 1%.
So what approximately would that look like? If you were to guess, I mean, just approximately, what, what would that look like then?
I can't tell you that, because we're still negotiating. So we haven't landed on what that would be.
What's, what would be the current, the current pricing on that right now? Like, if we were just to add what was this last year, without going into contract negotiations, what would that number look like?
That's what the $129.9 is. Yeah.
That's what that's, okay.
So that's taking, if you think, oh, just take me as an example, right? I did pay a certain amount this year. I budgeted for me for next year, that same dollar amount, right? An elementary teacher at Thornpool. Whatever that teacher is making this year, I budgeted that same amount for next year.
Right, and that's what I'm just curious, is that $129.9 is not really going to go up that much higher, drop down, depending on the contract negotiations? We're going to probably land right around there. It's not going to be at $137 million or something.
No. It will go up, assuming that we negotiate an increase in employee wages. Expenses will go up. But expenses will also go down in another area that we haven't booked in here. And the expenses will go down on those pieces of folks who retire, being replaced by a less costly employee. Those aren't reflected in expenditure reductions. And another category of expenditure reductions that's not in there are positions that we no longer need. And we've looked at that in several different ways. And we know there will be several of those that are in this year's budget that we're funding that next year will be zeroed out entirely. Again, we've got over 1,000 employees. It's, it's not going to be 50, but it will be a number probably greater than six, which is, I think, one of the things we were thinking about, and probably a number that is less than 25. But we're still working through all those pieces. And again, as Julie said, they're dependent on where students show up. And we'll have enrollees that come in over the summer. And sometimes that can impact our staffing, which obviously is our largest single expenditure in the budget.
Okay, and then just one more question. How much of the proposed budget is ESER funds for the total expenses?
It is roughly $4 million. All right, so then here's the big picture. Total revenue and our total expenditures, you've seen those each individually. But here would be the impact of our fund downs. So our current budget has us projected to use about $4 million of our fund downs and end the current fiscal year at about $14.6 million. The middle column there, the amendment that we're presenting to today, pulls that down by about $2 million. And that's that SO3 funding that we're using to help offset some of our existing costs, to kind of help with a little bit of a soft landing. And I know Dan wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'll say a little bit more about that. So one of the things the state of Michigan has said to districts that you can use these ESER dollars for, we know that in ESER 3, these dollars have to be used for students that meet certain qualification criteria. So one thing we could do, and some districts have done, is they purchased an additional person to come in to provide tutoring for students. And then you bring in only these particular students that qualify, and you provide them with tutoring. The difficulty with that is if you're doing that during the school day, you're taking the students out of current instruction. So in a way, they're going from their highly qualified classroom teacher to a tutor that we were able to hire at a much lower, probably hourly rate. And maybe they're not getting all the great instruction that they need in them. Some districts have brought in social workers. Well, it's hard to find social workers in those pieces. So it's, it's very difficult to take these dollars and add something more to it. Sometimes what you like to say is, hey, we want to add more time for these students, so have them stay after school. Well, some of these students, they don't want to stay after school. And you can't make them under these rules on that. And so we've provided different programs on that, but we still have these dollars that are unspent. Well, we know where interventions are happening. They're happening with the classroom teacher, right in the classroom. That second grade teacher will tell you, yes. In fact, I've got testimonials this year of teachers saying, I had a student come in that was two grade levels behind. Now they're only four months behind. So they caught up a lot of ground. So they've caught up a lot of ground. So what we're doing is we're saying, let's take a hypothetical classroom. And I'm going to use numbers that make the math easy for me. But let's say we've got a fourth grade classroom with 25 students in it. If five of the students in that classroom meet the criteria for SRR III funding, that's 1/5 or 20% of the students in that classroom. What we're doing is we're charging 20% of that teacher's salary to the SRR III grant and freeing up those dollars in the general fund. Now, that does not solve a structural budget imbalance, even a small one, as a matter of size. What it does is it allows you more time, more fiscal cycles, to find other areas that you might be able to reduce expenditures. Or more time for students to move through the system where you might be able to look to see, when those students come to a secondary school level, it's actually easier to get more efficient staffing on that. And so as those students matriculate through the system, you've got more time, as I call it, to land the plane on a longer runway. If you need a longer runway to put the brakes on, if your brakes aren't working exactly as desired, that's what this is doing for us. So we're not using these grant dollars to solve a long-term budget imbalance, no matter how small it may be. But we are, and you can see there, as we look at expenses or revenue that is under expenses on there, that's what's in the parentheses, it's small. As we look at that in percentage terms, it's less than 2%. And one of the things that we'll also insert here, if we look at that amendment column, that's for this year, that's our best thinking. The first column on the left, that says '22, '23 budget, that was our best thinking the last time we amended the budget in, what was it, March 2020? January, thank you. So we've gotten more information from them about how our expenditures are trending, what's going on with our revenues. So that's our amendment. But we're going to know when we close all the books and we have our auditor come in and look at everything. And I am willing to bet, coffee and a donut, that that $2 million draw from fund balance is going to be lower than $2 million. That's what we call our positive budget variance that also can impact here. It's happened every year. Just because it's happened every year doesn't mean it automatically will happen. But in order for us to draw $2 million, we have to spend every single nickel, dime, dollar in every one of the 15,000 budget lineups. I don't see that happening in, what's today, June 14th, in the next 16 days. I just don't see that. So we don't know what the grand total of expenditures will be because we're not yet at the end of the budget year, but we're getting closer. And so that number will be a little bit better. But back to the piece on the use of the SRR dollars. Again, what it does is it gives us more time to get a budget that's in balance. And it's not unlike, if you were trying to balance anything on a fulcrum point, you sometimes have to make little tiny adjustments in the thing you're trying to balance so it doesn't tip one way or the other. And Mary and Kristen will know, just a few years ago, we were saying, hey, it's tipping too far in the direction of adding the fund balance every year. And we don't want to be a bank where we're just adding more and more. That was a slight structural surplus. Now we have this slight structural deficit, and we're trying to say, hey, let's just tip it back a little bit. So these are little adjustments. And by using these SRR dollars in this way, it just gives us more time to make those fine-tuning adjustments. We're talking about 1% to 2% of our expenditures now. Make sense?
Can I ask a question then? Like, you know, say the fourth grade teacher, let's say, $60,000. So that the percentage would be right around, like, $12,000 that we would be using for SRR funds for that person's paycheck.
If you held 20%.
If you're doing 20%. So what are we doing with the $12,000 now that the SRR funds has kind of bridged that gap? Where does that $12,000 that was originally being paid to the teacher before the SRR funds came in work? What happens with that money in hindsight of knowing the SRR dollars are going to go away eventually? And we've been saving that up to come into what we have, like with the contract negotiations? And you know that it's actually saved money, right?
Yeah, good question. It's not going to a new expenditure. It's going to cover existing expenditures that otherwise, if we didn't do that, we'd have to make a larger draw from our fund balance. Does that make sense?
I'm guessing, well, yeah, because I, just to say, like, from 2020, what, our budget was at, what, like $112, $115 mil? Right, that right before this?
2020. Yep, our expenditures were $115 million in 2020.
Right, and now we're at minus, the SRRs were at roughly $125, right? $126?
Yep.
For '24?
Yep.
That's a lot of money.
Wait, let me just make sure.
So we've actually increased our budget by what? Do you remember, like, $12 million?
Hundred percent.
But there, there's a lot of moving parts with our budget. So if you think, we talked a lot about the retirement system and the retirement program that we have to participate in, and especially that Section 147(c). So the original Section 147(c) that we've had for years has been increasing every year. And if you look at page three in your packet, the very bottom line gives you a picture of how 147(c) has changed over the years. So you can look back to 2016, '17, 147(c), so that's the in, the out, right? The state pays us the money and we have to turn around and pay them right back. That money was about $6.7 million. Our current year, it's $11.2 million. So when you look at the growth of our expenditures, that's a big piece as well. $11 million of that $129.9 is that 147(c) in and out. So.
Yeah, so look at your example of 2020. I mean, we've grown almost $5 million in that, in and out on that. So of the $12 million growth, $5 million is attributable just to 147(c), which is the state making those additional payments and to bring down the long-term liability to return.
Right, but the increase is, now we're at $7 million between, for literally the last, what, two and a half, three years? That's a lot, I mean, that just seems like a lot of expenditures.
About 2.5% in revenue that increased at the same amount. Yeah, revenues have increased the same amount, but it's about 2.5% increase on average as you look at that over those three years. And again, what's reflected there is additional revenues that are available to the state. There were many years where we saw net decreases in revenues or at best essentially flat. I mean, it might be $100,000 here or there, but on our budget of $120-plus million, it was essentially flat.
So it would also include contract supplements that we've had, right? And other employee increases related to medical insurance, related to the employer's side of the retirement payment. Not this 147(c), but just our regular payment that we have to set aside and pay the state related to that. So it's kind of everything all added together, so it's in there. Increase in the cost of diesel fuel, increase in our utility costs, right? As those continue to go up, that, all of those contribute to that growth in expenditures.
Just got to ask one more.
You're right.
We're going to be coming into a recession this next year. We usually do. It's an election year. And we're in the, I mean, our country's polarized on so many things right now. That's probably going to affect us a little bit as well, right? I mean, greatly. I mean, if gas prices increase, I mean, and goes up more than 2%, we're going to be probably dipping into the fund balance, right? Like, if it starts to go up, we're, our country is just kind of, you know, I mean, if that's what's projected, is that we're going to be heading into a recession that's probably the hardest one that we've had for a long time. That's what's projected. So will that, the numbers there, and we have to maybe another amendment, like in the middle of the year start raising it? That's going to come out of the fund balance, I'm guessing, right?
It could, it just depends. I mean, we have built in, you know, our diesel fuel, let's just take that for example, right? So our fuel prices are kind of going up and down, and up and down. And that's been that way. Our fuel prices have fluctuated quite a bit and made throughout our history. But, you know, unless the state comes back and decide, you know, if the economy tanks all of a sudden and they come back and say, you know what? We're not, we gave you $4.58 per people increase, but now we need to come back and take $100 for people. They did that many moons ago. You know, general increases, we should be able to absorb them in the $129.9, but if there's something significant, then you're right. We would bring that back to the board in the form of a budget amendment.
And Holly, I would just point out, what Julie and Tyler always do, what we've got with the budget today, we've got a statutory requirement that the board adopts a budget by June 30. But there are many things that we don't know, the actual, just as you're bringing up, the actual figures. So we have to do our best estimating those. What Julie and Tyler always do is they're going to estimate on the conservative side. So for expenditures, they're going to estimate a little bit higher if they don't know the number. And on revenues, if they don't know the number, they're going to estimate a little bit lower. And just to give you some just recent history, that last June, at this very meeting, they, the board adopted a proposed budget that would draw $3.7 million from the fund balance. We're now at a point where we're going to draw $2 million. So that just points out that, yes, you're right, things can change. But typically, in my experience in working with Julie and Tyler, is they're changing in the direction as we get more information, as the year evolves, and we go from an estimated figure somewhere in the budget to an actual figure. It typically gets us in a spot where we're not drawing as much from the fund balance that we need to draw. And sometimes, and again, Mary and Kristen will remember some of these pieces, when we are adding to the fund balance, what sometimes has happened is as the year goes on, the estimate of how much we add actually goes up on the slight structural surplus that we've got.
All right. We're also presenting to you today next year's special revenue fund budget. And so that's the fund that really comprises three smaller ones. It has our food service program, it has our childcare program, and also has our student school activity. So similar to the general fund, we create a set of budget assumptions to build the budget. So on the revenue side, we are looking at the end of the childcare sustainability grant. So we're pulling that running down, like $1.67 million. And then there's some additional miscellaneous food service spending that we're pulling down, $11,000. On the expenditure side, again, you see that counterpart to the childcare sustainability revenue. There's the expense that we're pulling down. A slight uptick for retirement and medical insurance. We talked about that on the general fund side. So we have that same thing in our special revenue fund in childcare and food service. We're pulling down some food service equipment costs for this next year. And then, if you remember, at the last meeting, you approved the chart wells contract for next year, which is a slight uptick in cost there. So then here's what the special revenue fund would look like in total. So the total revenue includes, again, the food service, childcare, and student school activity account. So our current budget has us, I mean, fiscal year with a little under $5.89 fund balance. The amended budget had a little over 6. And that for next fiscal year, just a little bit under 5. And that's really intentional, we need to continue to spend on that food service fund balance because that requirement of only being able to have three months of operating expenditures. More details for each of those funds can be found in your packet, right? So there's, you see budget information for each of those three separate funds that comprise special revenue fund. And last but not least, we also present what our tax rates will be for next year. And there are no changes to our tax rate connection. So we are not being required to roll back our operating or recreation millages, which is just one of the lose for our budget, that helps the revenue side. So we'll maintain our operating mills at 17.6, 1.4. Our recreation millage at .9815. And the same holds true for our debt value. So that will be maintained at 6.05. That is all I have for the presentation.
Can I ask one, just one on this piece? Because I know we've talked about that myself a few times. Is there a reason, since we're going to the ballot this fall anyway, is there a reason that we're not this fall looking to do, looking to tax the community for like a heavily?
Rescuration.
Yeah, restoration. And so it's just bump this up 18 now instead of waiting for additional years or whatever?
Actually, we are looking to do that. We are, we needed to get our information to figure out, there's a form, it's called the L4029, that we have to complete every year and, you know, can't approve it for the budget. The board president and some, yeah, have to sign that. Sorry about all of those. But then, once I have the information, we've already made contact with legal counsel to draft some language so that we can kind of do that hedge so that we can make up that revenue loss.
Right, I understand that.
Until, right until November 25, for the current logistics wires.
Julian, help. My memory. Last November, with the recreation millage.
The change, so the real.
But the change doesn't take effect until 2025?
Yes, the change doesn't take effect until 2024.
2024, okay, thank you.
So this is the last year. So for the fiscal year '25 budget, the rec millage will be restored to the full mill.
Yep. Because we brought that question at the November election just because we could save money on election costs because there was already going to be a November election regardless for a variety of other things. So we brought that recreation millage piece a little bit early, but it doesn't take effect. That's what I thought it was, I just wanted to make sure I was tracking correct.
So we will be bringing something to the board to put something on the, something, put it on, request to put it on the November ballot to kind of restore that a little bit. Thank you. There are no questions from the board for Julie? Then we will open up, we have public comment available regarding the budget. Is there anybody that would like to make a public comment regarding the budget presentation? Okay. We will move on. This is structured a little bit differently than all of our other meetings because we didn't have committee hearings before. So rather than doing the consent agenda, we're going to be voting on each of these items individually so that way people have a chance to ask questions. So the first one is, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the special board meeting for June 2? So moved. Second half. Okay, and discussion on the minutes. Okay, you'll do a voice vote on that, please, then? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is the 2022-2023 General Fund Appropriations Act Amendment. Do I have a motion to amend the 2022-2023 General Fund Appropriations Act Amendment with available funds of $154,131,173 and appropriations of $137,509,730?
So moved.
Okay. And then discussion on, discussion on that? No, all right. Since the next several are appropriated money, I will do, we'll call both of these.
Oh, you want that, that one?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, next, do I have a motion to amend the 2022-2023 Special Revenue Fund Appropriations Act Amendment Resolution with available funds of $15,287,679 and appropriations of $9,256,915? So moved.
Thank you.
Discussion on that one? Okay, we'll call both. Dr. Marshon?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Next, do I have a motion to amend the 2023-2024 General Fund Appropriations Act? General Fund Appropriations Act?
Adopt.
Oh, adopt, adopt, I'm sorry, yes, adopt. Uh, adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four General Fund Appropriations Act Amendment Resolution with available funds of one hundred forty-five million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and appropriations of one hundred twenty-nine million, nine hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars? So moved.
All right.
Discussion on this one? Okay, we'll go for a vote on this. Okay, Dr. Marshon?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Calath?
Yes.
Dr. Bossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes. Okay. Next, uh, looking for a motion to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four Special Revenue Fund Appropriations Act Amendment Resolution with available funds of thirteen million, eight hundred six thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and appropriations of eight million, eight hundred eleven thousand, six hundred thirty dollars? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just can we, can you just remind us, that one is the one where we are obligated to spend down that fund balance, correct? We only have three months of operating expenses in that one?
Food service is part of that.
Okay.
And that's the majority, that's the largest part of the fund. That's what we've said before, because we care about sixty-five percent or expended in our fund balances, but it's harder to spend it down, but that's.
Yeah. Okay, so Dr. Marshon?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Calath?
Yes.
Dr. Bossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes. All right, the next item up is asbestos abatement. Can I please have a motion to approve asbestos abatement at Edavista Elementary, Pine Ridge Elementary, Central Middle School, uh, to total environmental services for a cost not to exceed a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars? So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this? Is this, is this, I guess, the second time around on this, though?
No, this one, uh, again, these are, um, pieces required for the renovation work that we're doing at these buildings. Uh, we have had asbestos abatement at other buildings and other projects, but these are newer projects on this. And these would be expenditures covered by the capital projects fund.
And this is part of state, like, requirement, we have asbestos.
Oh, state requirements, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when we do renovation, so if you've got it and it's contained and you aren't disturbing it, it, it's okay. But once you go in and you're ripping down a ceiling or you're pulling up old carpet and there's asbestos towel underneath it, you're disturbing it then, so then you have to be.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay, um, Dr. Marshon?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Calath?
Yes.
Dr. Bossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes. Next, we will be doing cafeteria furniture. We have a motion to approve the contract for the purchase of cafeteria furniture from Great Lakes Furniture Supply for Central High School for a cost not to exceed ninety-five thousand, fifty dollars. So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, can I, can we hear about this cafeteria furniture?
Oh, my gosh, did you see it?
No, that's why I, I just want to know, I want to know about it before we do the meeting.
Yeah. Fair question.
Yeah, so we have done, the school has needed, uh, furniture replacement. The, the current setup is not very good. They're really, the tables are just falling apart, quite frankly. Um, and so we worked, um, Steve and I worked with our architects along with, um, the administrators there, um, doing, really just coming in early and just doing that refresh. And so it isn't going to be a life-for-life replacement. Something going there now, it has the long tables or the round tables with the chairs. And, um, they've really done a good job of, um, really updating that and what we're proposing to you today, um, and just a variety of seating. So if you think of the renovations we've done at some of our other schools and we've updated the cafeteria furniture at the elementary schools mainly, um, we're doing something similar at Central High and really just giving, um, early refresh with that furniture. Um, so they're, they're pretty geeked about it. And, um, and those kids, uh, will come back and have, you know, hopefully we'll have new furniture, it'll just be, it'll be a variety of seating areas for them. So students who may not like being in the cafeteria at that time because they're, you know, busy out or anything, and there's some, maybe some smaller seating areas for them, um, we'll have some of the traditional larger ones as well. So we worked with the school administrators to, to pull this together.
So then when they do go under their renovation, this will just be applied to it? They will not get additional new?
Correct, we will, this will be it, right? And this will be it for a long time, um, that we won't go back and say, okay, we're going to do this again in that cafeteria for this furniture piece.
How old is the current furniture?
Oh, it's, I, I want to say it's, um.
My age?
Yeah.
Don't get me started.
Okay. When you said geeked, I was like, that almost felt like an understatement. I mean, both students and administration are like, oh, we think it's so bad.
Yeah, but you see, the tops are all peeling off. I mean, that laminate isn't a top.
So you can't clean them very well?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not very pleasant.
This is a particular need at this, at Central High School specifically, it's just a little part of this.
Yeah, it's, it's, the, the furniture at the other two high schools in the cafeteria is, is different than what Central currently has on that. They have the molded, uh, plastic chairs that, um, again, it's nice maybe that you've got an individual seat, but those aren't fun to sit on for, uh, any length of time as well. Um, yeah, and there are other issues for maintenance and the like.
Is this coming out of capital projects?
Yes.
Is this something that could come out of us or funds or not?
No.
Nope, that's good. Any further discussion? Okay, go for a vote on this one. And I got my time?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Calath?
Yes.
Dr. Bossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes. Okay, technology purchase. For a motion to approve the purchase of a hundred and fourteen Chromebooks and seventeen fifty gumdrop cases for people-driven technology for a cost not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars? So moved.
Second.
This is, um, again, out of capital projects fund, but this is replacing, uh, systems that we have for substitute teachers. When they come into the building, um, our attendance, oftentimes lesson plans, other things are all there. Well, the teacher has their laptop, and if they're homesick, they haven't brought it in to set it up. So a substitute teacher comes and says, I'm here to substitute in Mr. Smith's classroom. They need a device to be able to connect in and do all of that work. So we've had these devices, uh, for them. It's just like everything else, they come to the end of their useful life. And so this is a replacement of this piece. Did I get that right, Susan?
Yes. It's also, just to point out too, it's also to purchase some cases, those gumdrop cases, um, for our, our middle school students who are particularly active with their devices. So this will offer some protection and, um, hopefully, and will keep the life of those devices.
So the other people that are going to be using these are the substitute teachers when they come in?
Yes, that's what they're for.
And is there, are we replaced, is there a hundred and fourteen that we had before and that's what we're replacing, or is this hired, like, a different number or?
That's replacement.
And when's the last time that we replaced these, or bought for just?
Five years.
It's probably been about five years ago. I know my dad who subs in Forest Hills has said that we're one of the only districts to offer that to subs, and it makes the job incredibly, much, much easier and appealing. And I'd like to give the perspective of a teacher where we don't offer those to our substitutes. And I have to seriously adjust what my lesson plans are because they don't have access to that equipment, which is very frustrating. Think of it as learning loss on behalf of students.
And that's nice because if you're a substitute teacher, you can pull up a child's photograph. So, you know, sometimes when you take attendance or something like that, which you also have to do on the computer, you might get a middle school kid that makes up a name and their laptop say, oh, no, young man, that's not your name, I see it here.
This is such a fun point, too, because they have, it's like, we are always subbing for each other in the high school. And, I mean, fifteen hundred students in a high school, and yes, they do play these games, even as high school students, like, it's very annoying. And, and I subbed in the schools before they made the Chromebooks. And so, yeah, it was always sort of like, well, all right, I can't do these, I can't hook in any of the technology. The kids had to go around and take the attendance and, my God, and so this is great that they do it. And our internet firewall that we just talked about the last meeting is probably, this is always good, because these aren't the same Chromebooks that teachers use, or is it? It's a similar device that we use in the district and they all write on that same internet.
Okay, okay, cool, thank you. The other discussion? Okay, I'll go for a vote. Uh, Dr. Marshon?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Calath?
Yes.
Dr. Bossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes. Okay, and the next item is the two music items that we tabled from the previous meeting that we amended the agenda to account for because, to appropriately table something, you have to bring it up at the next meeting. And it wasn't in the agenda, so we amended the agenda to account for that. So there were two different items. There was the piano for the Fine Arts Center and percussion equipment for the Fine Arts Center. Um, the, the piano was an item that is on a shorter timeframe because it was a refurbished, used piano that was sort of being held for us. Um, and from what I understand, it is still available. They have not yet sold it off to somebody else. So there's that item. Um, and then the other item is the timpani. Uh, that is sort of a, a longer-term item in the sense that there won't be anybody playing any timpani on, or, or, for, you know, until probably whenever the first concert happened in October. So there's not as much of a timeframe on that. And I think that we are still looking perhaps for a little bit more information to make sure that we have, that, that the, the students' needs are being addressed, that this is a good way to spend the money. Um, and because of certain situation, it's only been a week since our last meeting and, uh, Julie has been out, so we haven't had a chance to get that information yet, um, on the timpani. So I would, I would suggest that perhaps we table the timpani or postpone the timpani to a later discussion, um, until we have had that information. But that perhaps we take a vote on the piano because it is more time-sensitive and it would be used much more frequently throughout the year by all of the different schools that come to the Fine Arts Center, uh, and use that piano.
And I would just say, Dr. Marshon knows more about pianos than I do, but this is a, um, a Steinway Concert Grand that has been, it's, it's, it's like a certified refurbishment. So I, I, I think what that means is the Steinway company has overseen the refurbishment of this. This isn't just someone in their back garage tinkering around with all the things to make sure. It's kind of like when you go and you buy a used car and the car company says, yep, we certify, uh, this piece, that this is in working order. We, we also did have, uh, at least one of our staff members go down and actually play, uh, the instrument, uh, to see how these, this is a Steinway Concert Grand Model D, which is, I believe, designed to really fill up a large space, like our fine arts center spaces. We know that the new ones, uh, uh, the bits came in, they're, they're north, just slightly north of two hundred thousand dollars. This one, I think, is around, just under a hundred thousand dollars upon that. The certified refurbished ones aren't things that you always find, though. That's where it's a little bit of something where, uh, the reports have been, it, it looks and plays and sounds great, uh, and it's a, a, a great, uh, instrument in terms of its track record, uh, with that particular company. Uh, but it's not always that we would find one of these, I don't know, I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Will this piano be likely used in summer stock for performances coming up this one?
No.
I, I don't think it would probably be during time, I would guess.
And they would use, they would use the upright, they use up here because it's not in the pits, so it's not in the room. But again, to, to Mrs. Strang's point, yeah, it's not just our concerts, like, where percussion equipment would be used essentially just for our, any other place that comes in and we bring in, you know, these other national touring people and artists, they would use that symphony and they currently use that kind of stuff, so it does make sense. Yeah, my personal opinion, my only initial, like, shock at seeing it was when I thought we had bought a brand-new $2,000, brand-new Steinway twenty years ago when the fine arts center opened, and thinking, how is it that we're already spending, you know, needing a brand-new piano? It just hasn't, but obviously then we, you know, learned that even at that point when we opened the place, it was still kind of a, a, a used model that legally wasn't that expensive anyway. Doesn't surprise me, you know, that that maybe is at the end of its life now.
Can you tell us, like, what does that mean, it's at the, at the end of its life?
It's just strings, and it's, it's not that it was improperly stored, it's not that anything was done. Some things are just not refurbishable or repairable. And yes, the cost of tuning it more frequently is not crazy, um, but it's a problem that just continues to get worse and worse in terms of you can tune that thing and you can stretch strings, and then they just immediately fall out of place again. And I know that they were talking, they have to tune the day of concerts just to get eight more hours so it sounds good that night, kind of a thing.
I was talking to Sean Ivory about this, one of our, uh, music teachers at Central High School. And Sean said, when the piano was purchased for the Fine Arts Center, it was purchased from a private seller and it was purchased used, so it wasn't purchased from a musical instrument company. And it wasn't in great condition then. So it was, uh, it looked good, but it's a, it's a Yamaha, which they make some great pianos, but they also make some pianos that are more value-priced. But he said it was really more at that, uh, level of quality. So when you look at it, um, you know, twenty-some years later, um, it wasn't new at that point in time. And he said it, it's, it's had some issues, uh, even around, the issues have just come out, is what he said.
How long do you, do they project that this new one would be viable?
My Steinway is eighty-three years old and it's in my family and it's had, um, cell phones in it and Legos and all kinds of things.
Yeah.
So, yes, if it was refurbished, they have a very long life span.
That's a great question, Maggie. Again, it, it sort of depends, in my understanding, of which model quality you're buying from the get-go. This is a very high-quality model from the get-go, and it's been certified in its refurbishment. So the expected useful life would be many decades, honestly, because it's a high-quality instrument. Where the current one we have is not that high-quality instrument. It looks good. Uh, if you sit in the audience and say, oh, there's a black grand piano, it looks good.
Is there a reason they chose to just Steinway, so the Yamaha again? Do you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's considered a better quality piano. There's, so there's a lot of differences between Mason, Ozil pianos that are difficult to, to, you know, I guess, describe on paper. But, yeah, I mean, that was a very respected, very high-end, St. Cecilia, the, the Boston, they have most, I, I mean, very, it is a very reputable brand of piano, probably the most reputable brand of piano. So it's, it's traditionally utilized in big housing spaces like.
And we have a little bit of a unique situation, right? In that our pianos are not just being used by our district, but like you said, we, we do, because we have that great facility, bring in a lot of traveling, uh, productions.
Right, and they don't bring their.
And they don't bring all their instruments, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, so it is nice in that respect to be able to have a beautiful facility and say, you can come play a beautiful instrument here, too. But I think that is nice.
Uh, the music department also talked about, uh, the possibility of raising dollars from the community. Sponsor a key, you can sponsor, you know, C4 key, uh, and, you know, there's eighty-eight keys on the piano, um, and, and you could do that in different ways if you wanted to go that route. Um, this is an expenditure that is eligible for the capital projects fund. Large instruments are on that. Um, and it takes a while to gather all that money that way. Uh, but we've done this before, like with playground, PTO will want to buy something and it's ready or there's a good price on something now, the district does that and then the PTO is sort of reimbursed. I, I, I'm not saying that that's what we finally agreed to, but, you know, that's also something we could, if we wanted to, put something in play and sort of bring the community along with this as well. It's, it's a great community venue, community gathering place. Uh, we've done other things, if you look closely in the facility, you'll see a variety of different community donors, uh, you know, have a, have a vestal view or a seat or, or things like that. That's not unusual in those type of performing arts facilities.
Thank you. Sorry, I was going to say, so I know that the discussion that has kind of evolved around timpani is, it sounds like it's different than around the piano. And there is wide-scale support, the staff feels like that is necessary as well? The teachers feel it's necessary as well?
It's teachers that came to us, um, yeah, bring that. And I didn't know it was an issue, honestly, until they came to us. And then as I talked to others, like, oh, yeah, you got to get it tuned the day of and preferably, uh, the afternoon of, because if noon in the morning, it might need to be auto-tuned by the time you get to the afternoon or the evening, excuse me.
And it's recommended to tune a piano every year, but there are times where it's like, there are four years. So they sure as heck should have to do a perfect concert.
Right.
And again, I trust Mr. Ivory's assessment, because he's a, he's an authority in the piano world And again, I trust Mr. Ivory's assessment, because he's a, he's an authority in the piano world and he stayed, I think, probably a little long in our district and stuff. So it's, I trust him that we're getting is a good fit and one that he thinks is going to be able to last a long time and be appropriate for that space.
So we're going to separate out the difference between the timpani and the piano? And we will get more information on the timpani? Right. So why don't we do piano now and then we can do tune the percussion instruments and we can have any discussion about that as well? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the piano purchase that was tabled from last month, but last week, not month? They use it all the time, last week's agenda.
I don't know.
Second.
Okay, is there a further discussion on the piano?
We have revenue that comes in, like for the fine arts. I always feel like it's like the foundation and all that stuff that seems to be separate or whatever. But we have revenue that comes in even off the concerts.
Sure.
If somebody wants and knows that we have this piece of equipment.
Right.
You know what I mean, like they don't have to haul something else in or they don't have to tune that stuff that, you know.
And it's customary, you know, when people are renting, oh, you want a piano available? Okay, here's an additional agreement on that, an additional cost on that, so yes, you're right.
Those will be higher now because of the Steinway.
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Von?
Yes.
Ms. Palau?
Yes.
Dr. Fasson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frand? Okay. Then the next item is percussion instruments that was tabled from last month. Is you sound like you want to.
Yeah, no. Just to say that you are correct that we have a little bit more time on this. It's not like the piano, these percussion instruments will be available as we gather more information. Again, I think the piece, as we look at our wonderful fine arts program all across the district, is making sure that there aren't other unmet needs out there in the system. As we're looking at that, as we talk to our fine arts director in the district, we have fine arts teachers all across, in all of our buildings and making sure that we've sort of shaken the bushes, if you will, to make sure that there aren't some other unmet needs that are out there. As needs have come to Julie in this area, it's something that we've been meeting many needs around individual instruments and the like. And those are things that don't come in front of the board because they don't hit the bid threshold. But I think the question was, hey, are there other things that are out there? So we want, we said, we don't think there are, but we can do our due diligence on that and spend a little bit more time going through that and making sure that the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing, if you will, on that. And there's some unmet needs in place. Julie's addressed need for, was it instrument or music stands, I think. Sometimes seating is a little bit different on those areas as well, on those things. So we feel like we've been meeting needs out there, but it's not a problem for us to just sort of use the belt and the suspenders, the double check to make sure there isn't something still remaining out there.
And the difference between piano and a timpani is we have timpani. It's just a inconvenience to move them from the schools into the Fine Arts Center. So it's not that students are going to be without instruments to play. It's just can we make this system easier, right?
Right. And it's our maintenance staff that oftentimes, or not often, they are the ones who are going to be moving things on that. When you're, you know, there are people who specialize in just moving like a piano. We're not talking about pianos here, but moving a timpani drum or moving a, the chime thing, the thing that we call the chime, all those things. We should have Trenton here to tell us all about it. You ideally want to secure those things, but also you can think of our district maintenance folks. They're busy moving and doing all sorts of different things. And sometimes we've had turnover in there. So if you're the guy who learned how to tie down timpani drums, but then you moved on to some different job and now the new person is in, hey, we got a concert tomorrow, we gotta get these things over there. Sometimes that has, there's been some extra wear and tear of moving those instruments around.
And I would just clarify from my end, that my, not even hesitation, but just an opportunity for education, it was all that I was really looking into this. Because again, I trust the recognition brought forth that it is something that we need and that the efficiencies gained makes sense for the purpose. And, you know, it's not the dollar amount that shocks me or, I mean, I don't know, you have to get it. But again, yeah, it's just an opportunity to understand how requests are moved through this particular system, you know, all the way up, because that just wasn't, I just, that's clear to me. So that's not really all that.
Can we find out too, like in, in the educational process, is this what everyone who interacts with keys, instruments thinks is the biggest priority to purchase?
Right.
Because I feel like we have heard that maybe that's not the opinion across the board. So I would like to know if that is true or not.
Yeah. And again, I can even understand the fact that all the individuals have to coalesce around one person who has to determine that and decide, you know, that
Yeah, not only has you like, you made this decision, but if it's, if it's 50/50, that's, that's worth the discussion then.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it'd be interesting to be able to see just what those purchases have been in the recent, however long, I mean, doesn't have to be exhaustive or extensive, that haven't met threshold for us to look at them, you know, just to see what we've done, you know, in that area of spending. And then, yeah, if we can, if it's possible, to just feel confident that the department agrees this is a good purchase or, you know, how that came to us.
How many years will we be removing instruments anyway?
Since the time it started.
Yeah.
I think Jeff wrote the amount of the first truck because I had to teach him how to back up the trailer to the 22 years old. We got that a lot of the time.
Did you ever drive one?
We never drove one. I mean, I don't know that we, I was probably responsible from where it came from.
It's just like moving them does like increase damage.
But it's not, it's not a good job. I mean, I get it, the idea of thinking that more efficient for sure.
All right. So could we perhaps entertain a motion to postpone the discussion and the vote on percussion instruments until a later meeting? Yes, I knew that we postponed this discussion and vote till later meetings.
Second.
And then is there any further discussion on this one?
Because my other question was when, when this, what would the time group do this?
Well, the nice, well, the nice thing about postponing versus tabling, tabling means we have to bring it up at the next meeting, which for us is again next week. So postponing it allows us to have a little bit more free rein on the time and so we can give that information and then put it on the agenda again and have that.
Right, so no urgency. Perfect.
All right. For this, I think we can just do a voice vote. All in favor of postponing the percussion purchase until a later date? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Okay. Pass this for everyone. Thank you very much. A reminder, if anybody would like to speak a public comment, cards are available over there and they will be collected right after the superintendent's report, which is up next.
All right. I think it'd be great, some of you on the board, I know that some of you, but some of you I don't know, have piano abilities. So I think when we get the new piano in, we should have a, you know, a board member concert on that. Several of you may have the ability.
Are you gonna sing? Because we understand you have singing ability.
And you will not see my two and a half years of piano lessons at work, but I know there are other administrators out here who've got piano abilities. Julie, yes, say bye Julie, yes.
Saw that.
And we have some fabulous students out there that can really do tremendous things with that. We are working and making good progress on filling our vacancies for principals at Nap Forest and Tornapple. In fact, later today, I will be meeting with candidates that were recommended from the building level process that we have with parents and teachers and students and staff members. Is it last week or?
Yes.
Yes, it was last week. Moving forward on that, and we've gotten all sorts of feedback on that. So meeting with those finalists candidates today. And there's good excitement around the candidates that we have as well. So I feel optimistic about that process as we are moving forward and we'll keep you updated. My hope and intent, and I believe we can do this, is to have this process buttoned up along with communications out to families and staff at these two schools well before my time comes to an end at the end of the month. So this is something I hope to have all buttoned up in that regard. We are also making good progress with our collective bargaining negotiations. As you know, we do have the ability to go into a closed session to talk more on strategy. I don't think we're seeing a need for that. It's really just coming down to hopefully tie up the last few remaining items. And then we would hope that we can communicate to you soon that we have a kind of agreement with our Forest Hills Education Association. And just a reminder how that then happens. A kind of agreement happens between the representatives of each of the parties at the bargaining table and then they take that to their general membership for a vote. They have in their bylaws what that process needs to look like and how much time that needs to take. And once a ratification happens with the general membership, it would then be brought to the Board of Education for their examination and potential ratification of that. So we're close and I appreciate everyone's work on all of that. So that's great. And I am continuing to make good progress. This is a busy time of the year anyway, but it's a little bit busier for me because I am going through files and files and files and realizing some stuff that I do not need to keep. Some things that I want to keep because it's some sort of personal memento and then some things that I want to pass on to a predecessor that for you. And not only paper files like this one here, but computer files. And I realized I should have started long ago. This is just a word to advice for anyone. My assistant will laugh at me and mend the things that I'm sure she chuckles at my idiosyncrasies. But I would just save a file and it would just go into a long list of files. I encourage you all to have a better nomenclature system in your electronic filing and folders that organize all those things because it's no fun when you have to go through, especially photographs, it just gets some sort of number coded to them. That is no good at all. So that's what I spent my weekend in my evenings doing. So avoid that, same as you. But that process is moving along well. And thanks to my assistant for helping in so many different places. Don't look in my office right now, it certainly looks like some stage of moving going on. That's my report.
Perfect, thank you. All right, you should just go and pick up any cards we may have. More communications, are there any more communications today?
One simple thing, as you know, we have moved into contract negotiations with Dr. Schubel to source our interim superintendent superintendents leave us. And it sounds like we will hopefully be in a position to have a draft contract ready by tomorrow. In much due diligence and talking with the groups we look to as potential search firms, actual search firms, retired superintendents, administrative rental county, it looks as if we're looking at a five day contract for a three attendance area district, which we are. Multiple educational opportunities. You know, our financing's been a little different as a result of having the downside of the two X formula for a long time. So we're looking at a potential contract at between $200,000 and $250,000. It would basically be dollars, you know, no benefits, no healthcare, no pension, none of that kind of stuff. Just the basic dollars that and it's really not a hard crack for me, it's current dollars part of the salary is.
But your, the employer costs, the employer, the district's going to save money because you don't have to pay in pension costs on that wage, which is substantial. And you're not going to pay healthcare costs. You're not going to pay longevity. There isn't going to be a payout of unused leave days or things like that. So the savings to the district is at least $100,000.
It is. And she said, you said five days? She didn't mention five days.
Yep. And again, you know, we have to look at how that plays out. But if it gets to a point where good with four, it's a mutual agreement by board in terms of superintendent that maybe three days a week are better. But for the time being, with getting acclimated and whatnot, Dirk Wieldrayer is going to kill joining you five days a week. There's another pending retirement that's going to be five days a week. Dave, my gosh, Kielox is our upcoming superintendent search firm consultant. He served at three districts and said they were all four or five days. And, you know, Dirk Wieldrayer did about, got to late, I don't know how many kids are there, a couple thousand?
Not that many.
Right, it was, he said four days, sometimes five days. So I just think with the current state of affairs and running
It's just really difficult for me.
It's recommended to plan five days, so.
And also to put a clause in there, when the board finds a long-term superintendent, that that contract would come to a close. You could put a clause in there that there's like a two week or ten day overlap or something like that in there. But it's not something that, you know, that's sort of triggered for that to come to a close or one year, whichever contract's in there.
So my question, because I know it's on the agenda to discuss, so we would be perhaps supposed to let me actually presenting this to us and we're voting on it.
Nope, just enough to enter. Just letting you know in case you want to discuss it anymore. And then at our upcoming meeting, we will actually vote on such a contract we look to approve.
Right, because
Yes.
Because any decisions that are made in regards to this actually have to come from the seven of us. So you're just
So, Dave, what, what have you learned since last week?
So we haven't talked to Sarah about this stuff.
Sarah's been talking to Christine and Sarah have been in discussions. I think Julie's in the know, so yeah, everybody is just trying to work through what is the best practice when hiring interim in the year 2023.
Because we voted to go into contract negotiations.
So that's just an update, what we, where we're at right now. And Christine's really putting that into, you know, contract form. And then obviously we get to look at it and say, is that checked out or about? That's just an update.
And we're looking at it prior to and it is like, we don't want it to be where we, we're at board meeting, also we're looking at, we have a vote.
Yeah, and you can get material at a time, so you can
For sure. So we can, yeah. So, yes. So do we have the meeting minutes and stuff from all those, the contract negotiations on that committee that we could look at too? Like, there's minutes for those sub-teams?
Yeah, it's been a long process, you know, I called Dirk Wieldrayer. Yes, there's never been a meeting. Dr. Mashad, who consulted with, who supposedly retired and had four consulting meetings this week. So this, you cannot do this for less than four days in Forest Hills. And he has a low experience here too. And I said, what would help us, if you can help us track down some recent, last two or three years contracts that show sort of best practices in how we compensate a superintendent, interim superintendent. So he's going to help us do that. We're hoping Dirk Wieldrayer might be able to share. But the whole idea is there's no meeting, it's just been doing homework and finding out how to construct a contract. Christine, I think, is working with our attorney. I was like, Dan's contract is something we can look at. So it's just trying to gather resources to give them to our expert in conjunction with our attorney to make sure we're doing right by us and the person we're hiring. So that's it, just lots of phone calling and research and asking questions.
I was just reading our bylaws on the committee, the investment and stuff. And so if you do it, you have, any of the stuff you have to do, it really got a public forum, don't you?
I don't know how we can call Dr. Mashad in a public forum.
No, I'm just saying, any, like, if we've met with Sarah about this or called her, right? I don't know, I mean, I'm just asking. Let me, can I split this up a little? But contract negotiations open though? I think most.
So are you done with the whole process? You're done with everything?
Well, there's
Yeah, I mean, we were told that there are no decisions to be made outside of us.
So we ended up negotiating and just trying to figure out what was just
You guys were advisors and bringing it to us, so I just wanted to make sure that we're Yeah, I think we, I think they would vote officially.
Exactly, we're not, we're not siding anything now. In fact, that's the update that they, I think, sent to the board.
And the committee doesn't draft the contract. Christine drafts that and works that out like that. So we voted to enter the contract negotiations and so then Christine takes that with Dr. Schubel and they work things out and they're putting it to us to vote on. Something's wrong with the website, it won't let me get into it. Hold on, hold on a sec. What is this looking at? No, it's going into we're literally in bylaws that we're going, they go through to meeting agenda.
Scroll down.
Two, five. That's what they give you for, it's all agenda. There's no, there's no bylaws on here right now on our, on our website. Hold on a sec. Yeah, bylaws and policies, it's not even showing up.
Yeah.
Oh, there, right. Okay, yeah, thank you. Toxic ban, any committee that's authorized to deliberate narrow options, limited options, or always make decisions on the board's behalf unless conducted its meeting in compliance with Open Meetings Act, final one.
But we're not, we're not making any decisions on the board's.
Right, well, if you go into contract negotiations and then someone's presenting it to us, that's not on the board's behalf, and we're voting yes or no on it.
Right, well, the committee doesn't go do the contract negotiations, Christine does.
This is just an update. In talking to other people that have more experience in this than us, I'm sharing with all you is this contract gets put together, what it might look like. I may have seen no piece of paper, it just, that seems to be in a very challenging field of education right now. What is expected of an interim?
The three of us are not negotiating the contract with Dr. Schubel.
No, no.
We're not making decisions.
Just sharing these to write out together.
But presenting one candidate to us would be, would have been considered making a decision. I know we have this process of elimination to bring more candidates. So, I'm just saying this, we've narrowed the options down to one candidate.
No, we have three. One didn't want to serve more than three to six months, and number two was up to bat. So, out of respect for that group and the way that this system seems to work, we said, let's talk about one, if that seems like a good fit, then we'll proceed with one. If the group said, you know what, you all missed the mark, let's go to number two, then number two would have come in and talked to our group. That's all that was. We've been encouraged, Jay Bennett from the Gaggo said, this is not the thing that you line these people up and say, everybody talk to the board and interview. These are retired professionals that are coming in to try to support as you look for your permanent person. So, it's not the same sort of setup as a traditional interview process. So, that was us just trying to respect the people interested and willing to come in and serve as our interim. Trying to pay attention to what we've learned. We were all in that meeting with Jay Bennett where he said, this is more of a, it seems like a dying, dying, I don't know if that's the right term, but yeah, partnership sort of discussion versus line you all up and interview you all like a, you know, the traditional process.
And we have, we have minutes from the, from the, from the cycle meeting and a list of the six candidates that we originally started off with, so...
We have a list, yeah.
We have it.
Sure, well, and we have it. So, we have the 60 candidates that, and they asked me to pass that to us, and I'm happy to highlight to you, we found one that seemed to be local, checked into that, talked to some of our peers, and they said this would be a good fit for Forest Hills, and we got, I don't know, eight to nine. I'd have to go look again, dumped a six. Two said, no, thank you, right away. One said, you know, we did actually ask one if they checked the boxes, and the last question was, nope, I do not want to work more than six months. So, that was that, and that left us with two.
And again, I mean, please, you know, trust that, there's nothing entirely helped from the board at large. I mean, that's first of this communication now. It's just a, any information I've been learning since the last week we entered negotiations is to keep everyone abreast. I mean, this is a collaborative process for sure. It's just been doing the legwork among the three of us, that we always make our decisions, no, and whatever.
Well, I wasn't expecting us to vote on going into contract negotiations the night of. I mean, that was a surprise. So, that wasn't anything that was discussed with us to make a decision. If we decide on this is what we want to do after discussion, then we're not for contract negotiations. That's what I'm saying. And I think some of the steps that we've taken is not...
But you reckon they're going to do this on an expedited timeline, right? To try to get somebody here before Dan is gone and all of that? So, what would you have rather, you would have wanted another week to think about Dr. Schubel before...
Well, I would have liked to see, I would like, I would have liked to have seen at least three candidates for us to look at. You know, I mean, I got resumes on Friday, and we're doing this on Monday.
Right, I mean, like, it's like... It's a fast process, Hallie, that's what we said back in April, that this is going to move very quickly, and there's going to be a lot of opportunities to jump in, and it is intense, I assure you. So, it's just a really odd bird. You know, we have limited time to try to make sure we have the people in place to run the district, and we have to line with state law by June 30th. So, that, it was an opportunity. It was, you know, we're kind of learning as we go too. And I said to these two, I can't believe I'm saying this, but this group is so hard to organize. As you can see, it's really hard to get six of us together. And personally, I would love every one of you to be there every step of the way. There's a decision to be made, and we know everybody will be there to a fit. So, why don't we let this group know on June 5th where we're at? And that this is one of, basically, two people that still could feasibly serve our needs and see if the group agrees we should continue the process with them. So, if the group would have said, no, not too many questions, let's table it, let's postpone it, that would have been fine.
But it really wouldn't have been fine, timeline-wise.
We would have done with it.
But we would have, yes, if we had, if we really had no viable candidates, we wouldn't have had to have done that.
Right, and like I said, we had one more person, and we met with him. He took the time, lives locally, understands the district, seemed to be a decent fit. And we could have tried to find a time to get some of us together for that. Then I don't know what we would have done. Probably, like you had mentioned, work with our search firm and, yeah, go through the same process. But it would have been scary because we kind of had already done that, so, but they might have had different tools to drop them.
So, when the search firm starts, then we don't need the subcommittee anymore, because then they kind of just take the reins and keep going forward.
Sure, I hope so.
Is that...
Yeah, so we meet with them on the 22nd, and they want to sit down with us and say, this is how this process plays out in our mind. Have your calendars, so everybody can be there when they want to be. And I'm sure if we want an extra meeting to meet with our community or whatnot, we can ask them to do that. That'll be our chance to structure that process, so we're all comfortable with it in a timeframe that works for everybody.
Well, I think it's just the questions that we would have lined up for Dr. Schubel would have been different than, though I haven't, I wasn't expecting that. I was expecting to meet somebody that might be up for consideration, you know, kind of, you know, meet and greet. And I did not realize that the process that we were going to do is what it led to on Monday. Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, I think that was, you know, I felt blindsided on that because I would have had a lot more harder questions than, you know... You know, like, you know, I mean, like, you're basically interviewing per se in front of the public, and there's like, what are your thoughts and feelings on certain things that are near and dear to the public? Say answer, you know, questions like, so I'm just saying, that's, that's what I kind of feel like in some ways that, you know, and I think that sometimes that's how you learn too, is, you know...
Yeah, and it's like, we had talked for a solid hour that day, and we had that same discussion about, I'm a little cross eyed. I said, you know what, but take advantage of this opportunity, or even we'll invite her to the reception because I want her to have one-on-one time with each of you. So, you know, again, tighten timeframe. I think you had a chance to develop questions because I called you Thursday or Friday that week. Do you know what I mean? So, I feel bad, I know it's so expedited, but trying to make sure we're meeting, this is where we're at. Obviously, it's fast, but let's take advantage of it and tell me what you need to try to get to know this person and feel whether or not we should forward them in the process. So, I know it feels fast, but it's just where we're at.
Yeah, I kind of thought we were just looking at it, not...
What would it feel like if we're going to bring her in and see if she's somebody the board would like to consider further? So, you know, if you want to generate questions, if you want to, you know, we talked about how busy you were, and, you know, come into reception and try to have a one-on-one with her, you know what I mean? So, I feel, I'm so sorry, I thought we covered all that in our discussion, and I feel bad, but...
I would just add, I know this is not a process that this district has engaged in on any regular basis. It was 2006, and then prior to that, it was 1985, so it doesn't happen that often. And, but interim superintendents are not an unusual route to take to provide more time for the board, for the community, to make this more significant decision of interviewing and looking at and examining long-term candidates. And where I've seen success with interim superintendents are people that have experience, people that have a demonstrated track record of competence, people that understand education, law, and policy, and working with boards, people that are good communicators, and people that understand their roles in interim work. They're here, in some ways, as a caretaker piece. They're not here to launch huge new initiatives that they just bring in themselves or things like that. And I can say, working directly with Dr. Schubel for the 12 years that she was at East Grand Rapids, in my mind, she certainly ticks all those boxes. And what's nice is there are many of us who know her, and there are people that we know who live in East Grand Rapids and work with her, see all those things. So, you're not getting an element that you get with someone that very few people know, that maybe has experience, that maybe has a track record elsewhere, or maybe is from another community or something like that, and you're having to get to know them a little bit more. I know that there are members of the board that don't know her, but there's many, 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 many people throughout our community and the Grand Rapids area that know her. And I don't know of a bad thing anyone has had to say. And certainly, if we look at the role for interim on that, I think, as a joke, but only half joke, it'll be an upgrade, I think, because you've got someone who's got a fresh set of legs coming in. That will be very helpful too.
We beg to differ, but... So, when you took, right, you know, when you were talking with thirty Christ, probably went over some of the things that happened at East Grand Rapids back in 2018 with the coach.
She wasn't at East Grand Rapids in 2018.
She was, or not 18, 2015. She left, she retired in 18, didn't she?
She retired in, I think she retired in 18.
Yeah, she retired in 2018. And I think she was superintendent when this situation happened, when we had a problem. East Grand Rapids police and, right, things like that. And I didn't know, but like, that's the kind of things I didn't know about and find out, you know, coming later because you kind of, you know, I didn't have time to talk to community members in East Grand Rapids after you kind of go out and, you know, what's your thoughts and feelings and, you know, how, you know, how the school is run and different things. Because we're bringing this to our school, so you kind of want to know the ins and outs. And I think there was, you know, so I just don't know if there's anything that, you know, that you guys had a chance to talk about, or she was able to say, this is what happened, you know? I mean, and I know there's two different, you know, things that kind of go on with that, with the police are saying, you know, like, hey, we wish you would have contacted us sooner in regards to what was going on with this coach at the time, and things like that. So, I mean, those are things I think us as a public, you know, or our constituents and, you know, our community members would, would...
But keep in mind, we are so restricted by FERC. You've heard that, they were short tenure, so many tanks, we cannot divulge information about kids or staff. Everything's protected by privacy. And that's what kills everybody, is you read the headlines and you think you know everything. And there are usually 27,000 bullet items under that, so...
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that where you guys are able to indulge in further to, I mean, because it's, I mean, if it's out there, the public, the public sort of brings it to our attention. And we're going to have to explain during, like, what, or, you know, whatever, bringing stuff up. And so, it's, you know, it's in, so I'm just, you know, I'm just curious how that works because I know that's, that was partly the reason why there was two firms that I didn't want because of what happened, allegations, and they went into lawsuits for it between the two firms that I looked good on paper and that I dug further. So, that, that's, I don't want to bring that to our community, right? So, that's, that was one of the reasons why I chose not to because of that. But I'm just trying to, you know, figure out, if we've got something that's out there, what does that look like? And if it comes to us in the next year, what does that look like? You know, like handling the process. So, I guess, I was curious to see how it was, you know, like, you get a chance to ask questions about handling, and then I guess, I guess we know.
I would not ask about personal issues, and I, she has been so open. I have no doubt she would be happy to talk to you about that to whatever extent she legally can. So, maybe that's what we do, is let you ask those questions, you know, because that's...
Because I think that would have been a question I'd ask Monday, like, how did you, how does that mean? Maybe she says, I'm not allowed to say certain things, right? Or she was allowed to indulge that, this is what the process looked like, and here's what I learned from it, or here's what we would do again because of the process or anything. But I think the public needs to hear, you know what I mean, like, needs to hear that, so...
I hear you.
Okay. So, okay.
Any other board communications?
Just want to thank, say thank you to our committee of three, who has done so, three so much work for that. So, thank you once again. No worries.
Okay, well, then we are to public comment. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we'll make your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. If I call your name and you have changed your mind about speaking, you may say pass. Scott Bensock.
Hi, I'm Scott Bensock, and you're in by I guess on five. I've been looking through the check registry that's on the board's site. And currently, it's the only check registry that's available for the 2021-2022 school year. There have been prior years where for some reason, the administration has not keep the old check registries on the website. The administration uses the same website address for the new check registry, systematically then overriding the old registry. So, I saw a large expenditure for chart wells, which handles an aspect of the food service for FHPS. I say an aspect, because FHPS actually employs the various workers at the schools. There are currently two open food service positions on the FHPS website. One's $13.72 an hour, and the other's $13.22 an hour per substitute position. Other districts have chart wells handling employees with low or green bill, and they have open positions on the chart wells website, but not at FHPS. So, I searched for chart wells in the check registry, and I found 12 entries that consist of four different categories. Management fees of $474,604, MGR salary in Frenchfold for $390,550, food costs of $538,503, and cleaning costs of $761,539, for a grant total of $2,165,98. In 2019, FHPS started a contract with chart wells, and there are no details about the contract in minutes of the meetings. Except that the contract can be reviewed for up to four weeks. In 2020, the contract was renewed again for the 2021 school year. Once again, no details. There are no agendas or minutes for the finance or education committees from January 2021 until September of 2021. And I don't know why aren't they there? I mean, were there no meetings during that time? In 2021, the contract was renewed for the 21-22 school year again, with no details. So, that is when the $2.1 million was spent. Reason why I'm stating those things is during the May 2022 Finance Committee meeting, there was some actual detail that the contract is not to exceed $200,000, which according to documentation is a contractually agreed upon increased rate of 4%. In the May 31, 2022 Finance meeting, there's additional information with this, with this statement. The annual cost of this service for the current year is approximately $203,000 out of a total budget of approximately four million, where it was actually $2.1 million. So, why is it described to be 10 times more than what it says in the package? You know, just this past May, you guys reviewed the contract for chart wells that is not to exceed $211,000. So, my issue, and it's always been, is that the board will prove spending millions of dollars at every BME with no real details made available to you or the public for review until, well, after the fact. Typically, six months after the fiscal year is done, that's when the check registry becomes available in December of the primary school year. I know FHPS is doing what it is obligated to do, but that is a fair rule. This district should do it better and keep the old check registry on the website, as well as provide to you guys the details of what is actually, actually being spent every month. The BME actually paying the bills for the entire month. Can I finish this? No, I'm just here to talk. I do have some comments.
That's nice. We do like to try to keep the comments to three minutes, though. I know there's nobody else here, but... But we'll be happy to follow up with you, with your comments.
Well, the other thing is I do like more dialogue. I like how you guys talked about what the reason those chromes are for. But please put them in the packets, so we, we know, I mean. And also with the cafeteria equipment, my daughter's second eye, I'm sure she'll be beat next, uh, next school year to have new ones.
Okay. Closing remarks.
Happy Father's Day to...
Yes, and happy Father's Day.
That's it, that's all I have.
That's it. All right, is there any other business before the board that has not been addressed? Okay, hearing none, are we open for the business, team adjourned?